Let's call this meeting to order. Thank you. We'll begin as we always do with public comment. So if you have anything you wish to say to the board that is not about something on the agenda, this is the time to do it. And if you wish to speak to the board or during the meeting, please come over here to the microphone. Otherwise, what you're saying isn't taken on FCTV and taken home, so it's incomplete. So if you're going to come speak, give your name and state your position and then say what you have to say. Is there anyone has something they want to speak on not on the agenda? Okay, then we can begin. Paul, minutes?
I'm Chair. Since this meeting was only 12 minutes long, it was relatively easy to do the minutes. My recommendation approval of the minutes of November 18th, 2024, as written.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
For proof, thank you, Paul. Next, we have two continuations actually on the agenda for a public hearing. Steven Marsh, a definitive plan application to create a three lot subdivision at Zero Old Barnstable Road. This has been before us a few times. They have requested a continuance to January 14th. Pat, could you read that?
Yeah. Can you please extend our meeting until January 14, 2025, if we are doing another site block from P through C? But it's also the decision.
Decision date?
The January 31st.
Okay, so two motions, a continuous and decision date moved to January 31st. Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
It's done. Next, a public meeting. Kevin Clower, on behalf of the Cape Cod YMCA, also requesting a continuance to January 14th. Do you have that motion?
Hang on, just a minute. I better turn my page here.
Yep.
Please consider this email, a former request to continue the site plan review hearing date until January 14, 2025, and to extend decision deadline until January 30, 2025. And this is in regard to the YMCA.
YMCA. Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
It's done. Okay, now we have a piece of business we have to pay attention to. Lawrence Lynch Realty Corp., a site plan review application to construct a solar photovoltaic carport canopy system over a gravel parking area at 459 Blacksmith Shop Road. And it's actually modifying a planning board site plan review approval from 2019. So this was filed November 6th, and it can go, the deadline on it is February 4th. Who will be speaking on this request? Public notice?
I'm Chair. Public notice of this subject was published on 11/22/24, and 45 abutters were notified by regular mail.
Okay, if you could introduce yourself, please.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. My name is Mike Patterson. I'm here representing NextGrid and Blacksmith Shops Solar. With me is Melinda Costello from Weston and Sampson Engineers. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. On June 19th, excuse me, June 20th, 2019, the planning board, this planning board approved an application submitted by Borrego Solar Systems, Inc. That application consisted of two arrays referenced as the North and South Arrays. We are here tonight requesting a minor modification to that approval to construct the Northern Array. The current existing site is used as a sand quarry pit. It is located within the agricultural zoning district and the solar overlay district. It is not within the coastal pond overlay water resource protection zone. Oh, apologies. It is within the water resource protection zone, apologies. There's currently no wetlands located within or abutting. Our project that we're proposing is to construct a large canopy mounted solar array with battery energy storage system. This project will have an estimated lifespan of 20 to 30 years. We are here currently requesting the minor mod approval for, we are only requesting approval for the construction of the solar array at this time.
Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about this project?
I can give some additional information on the stormwater design associated with the project. So as he mentioned, this is for the northern portion of the array. Do I have access to? So this is the northern portion of the site, the existing array to the south. The south side of the site is over here to the east of the existing gas easement. So as Mike mentioned, this is an existing sand quarry pit. So what we're doing is we're just proposing to do some grading along the side slopes of the array to expand the footprint within the center of the site. We are proposing to grade the site with a high point right in the middle and pitching it to the east and the west to two stormwater infiltration basins. The area within the solar array is going to be a gravel footprint. There's three individual equipment pads that will be surrounded by a seven-foot-tall chain link fence for compliance with the National Electric Code. The stormwater basins on site are designed to handle the change in curve number for peak flow based on the increase because of gravel cover. They also are designed for the total water quality volume to handle one inch of rainfall for the impervious area of the site, which we did consider gravel to be included in that impervious number. There are, there is a sediment forbay associated with each infiltration basin that goes to a gravel spillway and then into the infiltration basin itself that will be seeded with a grass seed mix. And then all of the water is proposed to be infiltrated within the site. The site is an existing bowl. There's no discharge offsite to abutters. And that's just a little bit more background on the stormwater design associated with the project, too. But we'll open it up, questions for you guys.
Okay, are there questions from the board?
Seems pretty simple.
Do you have more plans coming or is it's complete?
This is complete.
Do you have any eleva, are you building structures for, that they're going to park under?
Our current plan, all we are requesting permission for is the canopy itself. We have planned at some point to lease the under area.
Okay, so we're going to see something later, okay. I thought I read that, okay.
That, its own special, they would have to kind of request their own permit for whatever use they're looking for.
Got it.
Tom?
Hi. Is the entire space going to be, is the array going to take up the entire pit or is there going to be some space left? I thought I read that there was going to be some space.
The entire pit will be covered.
It will, okay.
Obviously, this is an elevated solar array, so there is space beneath the system. There are proposed, I believe it's three concrete pads for the specific solar equipment and battery storage, battery energy storage systems.
Another question. Yeah, do you have, is there a wildlife corridor on that property?
So the existing, the entire site is within the, I forget the specific name of the district. It's the wildlife corridor district, overlay district. So the site itself, there's no perimeter fence around the array, just around those three isolated equipment pads. So essentially, the whole site still acts as an open corridor.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
I just have a question.
Paul?
What is the purpose of the parking?
Say again.
What's the purpose of the parking besides the array on top?
Currently, we have no purpose for it. We just have to have a.
So it's not to park vehicles underneath?
Correct. This time.
It's just a array, period.
All it is is a solar array.
So I don't see an access to it.
If we decide to lease it to someone, it'd be, again, their responsibility to come before you to request a use permit.
Isn't it true that in that, in that place, you're not allowed to have parking anyway? Parking is not a possibility. It is disallowed in that water resource district.
Understood.
Anyway. Is that true?
In the water overlay protection district, I believe that's a prohibited use.
It is a prohibited use, isn't it? Yes. So there would never be parking there. So I am wondering why you want the array up from where it's already approved to be?
My understanding, it's currently a sand pit. It could be leased at some other points to other people for material storage.
What kind of storage would be allowed there?
For, I do not know.
Sand?
Sand, right, more sand.
That would not be up to me. As I said, we have not leased the space to anybody. The current scope of our project is to build the solar array. That is it.
It's not up to us to decide what.
No, but I think we would be concerned, were we to approve it at the height that you want it. You've created a situation where an illegal use would be so easy.
Under the current plans, there is no proposed use under the array itself. It's just elevated as the current design of that's what they want to propose for the solar. As Mike mentioned, if there were to be an additional use on the project, that would be separate to this minor modification application and would have to go in front of the board as a separate application for that use in the future. But there is no identified use at this time.
But we would be creating an opportunity for an illegal use. Charlotte?
I would, I'd like to state it a little stronger. It's come to bite us before when we've approved something that could potentially be used for something that's not legal, and we hear, but you approved it, you obviously knew. So how did you approve it? And it comes back to bite us. So.
Understood.
I don't know whether we can strongly enough prohibit that in a decision if we say that, okay, we approved this only, but you can never use it for anything that is prohibited.
We can certainly condition your approval with some language that makes it clear that any future use would need to follow all zoning bylaw requirements. So the Water Resource Protection District has a variety of different uses that are allowed and prohibited. And if anyone were to come forward with an application for a use within that district, they would have to either comply with the requirements set forth within that section or be prohibited from its use. So you can certainly make some findings and put in some conditions into this approval for it.
Chair, could you refresh our memory on what exactly was approved in 2019? What have they approved for now?
So in 2019, of course, I left my notes upstairs. It was a very large solar array on two properties, as the applicant was stating prior. Do you mind just clicking the first tab on the, on the very top? That's the GIS system. And so that, on the screen, what you can see is the two arrays. The first on the southeast side of the electrical easement has been built. The other array, which is the subject of this application, has yet to be built, but that was approved in that area as well. I don't remember the exact kilowatt number, but essentially it was.
But it was approved at what height for the array?
The height of the modules were approximately three feet off the ground at its highest point because they're angled.
And the request now is for what height off the ground?
There's no exact height currently, but it would be, my assumption would be over 12 feet.
Yeah, we'd want to nail that down before they do an approval. That was going to be one of my questions.
Yeah, that's why, there's going to be some structure to that, that you don't have in your plans yet, right?
Correct.
So these are incomplete. You're going to be putting in some steel and building it up in the air with structure?
Correct. So when we develop our construction drawings, you know, for building permit submission, then yes, it would have all this information in.
Because we usually see an elevation of what's getting built as part of our site plan. And that's what I was questioning before, I didn't see it. I thought you were coming back with it later, but you're not sure.
There you go.
This is, if I may zoom in here. This is a typical illustrative drawing of what, of what the canopy would look like underneath. But as Mike mentioned, the structural design is not finalized at this point, so there's no structural detail as to the, the size of the I-beams and the canopy foundations.
I think it was labeled carport, wasn't it?
I thought I saw that, yeah.
Right.
It's a general term for a solar development that's elevated. It doesn't specify that there's going to be cars parked under it. I'd also state that, you know, it's currently, it's a sand pit. If operations cease, it's just an open area, again, like you stated, people could illegally park. We're, again, we, our company, we develop and own solar. We do not have vehicles in which to store or equipment in which to store, so at no point would we be using this. And as you said, it's already illegal to park cars in there. It doesn't change it to be, we're not requesting that you allow it or anything. We're just saying.
I'm not accusing you of having bad intentions. I don't think you do. I think that it's creating a situation that invites ill use. Not from you, not from anyone driving by going, aha! It just would be there. And it's a potential use that will remain illegal, so it seems questionable for us to have approved it.
Why would you choose that height? You're saying 12 feet. The current one that was approved is three feet.
Right.
The current one is a ground-mounted system, so it's just a raise, I'm assuming like a ballast mount, on the ground itself. The idea was it is a large portion of property. There was the idea that it could be leased out for some type of other use, which again would be stipulated by you. There's also an access, there's access gates on both ends, so.
Have you, I've looked at a couple solar things, and we looked at doing parking under it, and the dust that was drawn up from running, parking on sand and everything really aggravated within the planning that they really thought was a bad idea to have it under their solar. Have you considered, you know, that, what kind of traffic you're going to have under there and its impact of dust on your, on your solar panels?
You're not allowed to have parking or traffic under there.
We have no plans.
Or trap, something, they're allowed, they might be able to drive a truck through there.
Possible.
Okay, and traffic is what I'm talking about. Because it does kick up dust, and on a site that I was involved in, we decided not to do it for that reason.
Ah.
That's all we bring it up because I had little experience with it. I wondered, yeah, I was wondering what you're, obviously, somebody's trying to be able to save the land, use it for another use, because you're going to spend a lot of money putting steel in that you don't need to put in. So somebody has a plan with an investment there and a return, which we just don't know what it is.
But the plan is just to be able to have the possibility of renting it to someone else down the line. There's currently no plans. Again, we don't have any car rental organization coming to us looking for a place to park. It was just the idea, the owner of the company said, you know, we have this large piece of property, we're going to spend all this money to level it out. It has an access road to and from. The idea was we could possibly use it at another time for some, release out the property with underneath while still making money from the solar production.
Is there any way we could get a list of the uses that are allowed?
Yes.
Yeah, we could provide that.
Yeah.
Could that be possible, like a stipulation of your conditions?
Yeah, so these are the uses, yeah.
These are the uses, these are the only allowed uses?
Let's wait to see that.
Yeah, yeah, so that we, we have an idea of.
Of what the possibilities are.
What the possibility is. Yeah.
Would it also be possible, so it sounds like you would be entertaining a continuance to another meeting.
Right.
Would it be possible to get an idea of a proposed height for the array, for the new canopy?
Yes.
For that amount of time? All right. I think that might help, especially considering the depth of the bowl, if you will, and whether or not those arrays could be seen from anywhere, really.
Well, that was my first thought, as they were raising up, because it is a depression.
Right.
Well, it's a pretty big drop. What is it, 20, 30 feet or 40 feet?
It's about 30.
30 feet.
30 feet.
It's also surrounded by woodland, so it's, again, additional screening for the type of site.
I don't think it'll be visible unless you stand on the edge.
Well, they're going to add 10 feet.
But it would gain you a little more solar being raised.
It's a lot of steel. Somebody has an idea there. I don't understand.
Yeah, there's some idea that we're not hearing about. Shall we, let's have a motion to continue. Thank you.
Okay. So, well, this is a site plan review, so we don't really have to have that. We're just continuing on site plan reviews.
It would really be up to the applicant how much time they would need to answer your questions, but the next available meeting would be January 14th.
So we can get you information on the height of the array? Is that the only information that's being requested? If we come back with that, what's the, what are the next steps for the project if we come back with the height of the array?
Well, it would be the height of the array, and given the topography under the array, I would think it would not be a uniform height overall. So it would be, if you were to do side elevations of it, what would it look like? Is it going to step down into the bowl or how are you going to set that up?
I think it is. I think it pitches very slowly to the outside edge. The elevation is all decided.
Yeah.
It comes high in the middle, it pitches to the outside edge to drain it, it's all laid out.
They've graded it already.
It's all laid out, yeah.
Okay, then it's just the height, and we'll take care of finding out allowed uses.
Okay. And then would there be a potential vote at the next meeting with that information?
Yes.
Well, no, we don't usually vote the same meeting that we make a decision. Remember, we instruct.
Will you vote to, ask you to?
Yeah.
Whether to draft a positive or. It'll be a decision.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
I'm standing in Texas.
Oh. There might be a tax issue?
I've reached out to the landlord. They are aware, and they said they will be taking care of the issue immediately.
Before the 14th?
I will, I will check with them and confirm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, moving on. Here we have, the applicant is JJEC Development LLC, a site plan review application to construct 10 two-bedroom apartments in five two-story structures at Four Sandwich Road, and Mr. Amet, Mr. Keenan, and Mr. Bunker for this project. Paul, public notice?
Public notice for this project was published on 11/22/24, and 39 abutters were notified by regular mail.
Okay, Mr. Amet.
Hi, Ms. Harris, members of the board. For your record, I'm Bob Amet. Represent the applicant, JJEC Development, Massachusetts Limited Liability Company. The CEO of JJEC is here, that's Eric Escander over here. Other consultants for the project are architect John Keenan and Tom Bunker, surveyor.
Mr. Amet, could I just ask, I was looking up JJEC just to see what I could learn about it, and it's either in Ohio or Pennsylvania or Massachusetts.
Massachusetts. I'm in Massachusetts.
You're the Massachusetts one?
Yeah.
Are they all connected to one another?
No, I have no idea.
Oh, they look the same.
Really?
Yeah.
Looking at it as well, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
So JJEC owns dozens of Dunkin' Donuts franchises in southeast Massachusetts, and they own the real estate that some of those franchises are on. They own this piece of real estate at Four Sandwich Road. They also, I believe, are the franchisees for all of the other Dunkin' Donuts in Falmouth. Yeah. So the site which is shown on the board, this is an existing conditions plan, is presently the Dunkin' Donuts store. It was an Eastern Bank or Plymouth Savings Bank for many years before 2016, when it was converted from a bank to the present use, which is the Dunkin' Donuts store. So it already had a drive-through before it became a fast food restaurant. And it's a two-acre site. It's actually 1.98 something acres. And the proposal before you is to create some housing on the site. As business people, JJEC has become very aware of the housing problems that their employees have, and they have lost some key employees on Cape Cod because of the difficulty of their finding housing. So they decided to look at the possibility of housing on this site, which, as I said, is two acres and, as you'll see, has room for what they propose to do and is in the business two zoning district in Falmouth. So we submitted plans to the board that showed the proposed development of three buildings with a total of five, I'm sorry, a total of 11 apartments. This is not the plan that we want you to approve. We have revised the plans, and I'll show you what we propose. This is the current rendering. It was advanced to this stage only, only today. We very much appreciate the courtesy of the staff working with us, allowing us to submit revised plans, which we told them were coming. And so we're proposing five duplexes, only 10 units, not 11. And there's some business reasons for that, that change. And the result of this plan is it's about 2,000 square feet of less building coverage and about 1,400 square feet of less total coverage on the site. So it's, is a, it's a reduction, but the septic system isn't going to change. Drainage is already designed. It can be scaled back, and we'll get to that. But the present proposal is for five duplexes, as shown. These meet the required setbacks, including a 25-foot setback over here on the west side of the property because these properties are zoned agriculture, whereas this property is another business, zoned property. Now, I mentioned that this is B2 zoning. So is the lot immediately to the north, and that's the end of the business zoning. Fortunately, or maybe not, I say unfortunately, or maybe not, the Mr. Cod district ends right here at the property line. And for some reason, the, neither the sewer extends past this common line, it goes right to the, to the property line. And the Mr. Cod district, which must be on the sewer, doesn't reach this property. Interestingly, when the Dunkin' Donuts was approved in 2016, the decision of the planning board on site plan review specifically states that the property is in the zone to be hooked up to the sewer, in the phased for future sewer. And I think that was correct, but the current plans, and I don't know if we were wrong in 2016 or whether the plans have changed, were not in the future sewer district. That also ends right at the property line. And therefore, and this may be better, we are proposing a state-of-the-art nitro septic system, not only to serve the new residences, but we will be tying in the Dunkin' Donuts store to that septic system. We're also reducing the number of approved seats from 26, which was approved in 2016, and will be satisfied with only 18 seats in the restaurant. And the result is, is that there, that with this project, there will actually be a reduction in nitrogen concentration from the property, from the use of the property, and therefore there's compliance with the coastal pond overlay district. It's worth pointing out, then, almost all of the. It's worth pointing out, then, almost all of the properties between this property and Great Pond, which is the Costa Pond overlay district, are going to be sewered in the future. So, it may be unnecessary, but we're putting in a denitrification septic system as part of this proposal, and the likelihood is that in the future, that would be required anyway. So, that's what I wanted to tell you. With the parcel having just shy of two acres, the density of ten units on the, on the two acres is under the six units per acre that's allowed by special permit in the Business zoning district. We will be getting a special permit, or applying for a special permit. We have applied for a permit, from, a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and our hearing is scheduled for January sixteen for that. Because we've made some changes to these plans, the detailed grading and wastewater and drainage plans might change a bit. Well, the wastewater won't change, as I said, it's still the same D- night, D- night system. But Tom Bunker will be working on some additional plans, and will submit a revised package so that the engineering department can review everything again with the changes. Their response, that is, the DPW's response to the drainage calculations was actually that they felt that we had misinterpreted regulations and provided more information in the two hundred and twelve pages that was submitted for the, for that report. So, we are going to be redoing that, simplifying it. We are reducing the lot coverage with the change to the five duplexes. So, there'll be some changes to, to the drainage layout and plan. For a fast-food restaurant with eighteen seats and ten two-bedroom apartments, the parking requirement is thirty-eight spaces. We probably don't need that many spaces. But that's, we're showing thirty-nine spaces on the plan, so we're in compliance with that. If you've visited this property, you're aware that it's beautifully maintained, as I think all of the franchise's facilities. It's very attractive. And it just feels, when you're there, that, that it's the best drive-through layout you've ever seen. It is two full lanes that go around the building to the drive-through. Plenty of room for a car to escape the line and drive, drive out. The zoning bylaw requires seven twenty-foot-long stacking spaces, queuing spaces behind the drive-through. Those seven spaces get you to about this point. This fifty-four-foot contour appears to be a hundred and seventy feet away from the drive-through, so that would be eight and a half cars' distance. And that means that a car, if, if this is filled, a car can escape by just going out this way. It really works very well. And with parking for the residences in this area of the plan, the queue for the drive-through shouldn't have any impact on people behaving to get into their, to their space. These are the drawings that have been done by Keenan and Kenny. We're proposing now two-story buildings, each with the two units, and the layout is shown. First floor of the A unit in each building, and the first floor of the B unit. So, we have all, all of these drawings that are in your file. The height of the buildings is twenty-eight feet, so it's well within that's allowed. The traffic report that was submitted when the Dunkin' Donuts was approved estimated that there'd be as many as two hundred and seventy-nine trips in the peak hour, that is half-in and half-out, of course, the peak AM hour during the week. The actual figures are a little bit less than that, but for planning purposes, those, that's enough. Compare that to the number of trips expected from an apartment like this, which is point four-six trips, or about one trip for every two units in the peak hour. So, the total number of, of trips is likely to be four point, four... Four point six trips, or five trips in the peak hour from the residences. So, it's a tiny, tiny fraction of the traffic that's already associated with the site, which doesn't seem to have created any problems. I did have a discussion some weeks ago with the town planner who felt that, that the small increase related to the residences was, would be inconsequential, at least to the extent that it wouldn't be necessary to have, to submit more traffic information to the planners. Hope you agree with that. I think I've probably given you enough information to stop there. If you have questions, for me, I can try to answer them, but John Keenan and Tom Bunker are also here to help you out.
Let's see if the board does have questions. John?
Excuse me. The back of the building's back, they, but up against residential area.
Well...
Is that correct?
No, not exactly.
The next apartment's still business-owned, right? Went to the north, you said, was also business?
This lot is business-owned, John. This is a Business Two district, and presumably, who knows? But right now, there's a single-family residence on that lot, but it could be developed for business in the future.
So, I'm sure that that person's going to have concerns about lighting on the back, on the back of those units. Because currently, it is a residence.
Sure.
So, I just think you should be able to address that at some point.
Okay, I think that the lighting specifics is something that we could get to you for your next meeting.
Okay, and I think, reading the engineering report, there was some discussion about the sidewalk. Does the sidewalk end at the, at the current driveway, or is it going to extend afterward? It looks like it's going to be where your septic is.
Presently, the drive, the sidewalk extends all along Sandwich Road up to this curb cut.
Correct.
And in fact, at the, just before the curb cut, there, there is a ramp with the proper materials for somebody who is blind. There is no further sidewalk anywhere on Sandwich Road to the north. Sidewalk on the east side of the road extends all the way along Sandwich Road, at least. Not sure it goes all the way to Bricktown Road, but it goes at least to the service center, a mile or so up the, up the road. We don't think there's a good reason to install sidewalk for this eighty feet or so on the north side of the, of the driveway. Again, because the sidewalk's on the other side of the street, and it doesn't lead, lead anywhere. So, if a resident of these units wants to get to the sidewalk, there's already a path, that's a safer path, that goes past the Dunkin' Donuts and goes down to the sidewalk over here. I have a, it's, you can see that in the aerial photo, this, this walkway. Anyway, our request is not to be required to put in a sidewalk in this northerly portion of the property. There are the remains of two old curb cuts which were in that area. They should be landscaped and filled in. The engineering department pointed out that there is curbing along Sandwich Road that extends to about where the arrow is, ends at about forty or fifty feet from the driveway. But the sidewalk is there. We'd like to not do any more work in the roadway. If, I don't think the town has any intention of spending the money to put a sidewalk along the west side of Sandwich Road, where we already have it all the way on the east side of the road. And improvements, those improvements in the roadway, which seem unnecessary for this project, just add to the cost of creating housing, which is really going to be workforce housing in its nature. These apartments are...
I, I...
Square feet of each apartment, as revised, about seven hundred square feet. Yeah.
And the two, yeah, I only bring it up because it's part of engineering's comments. But you might want to give some consideration to an area there for children in case they're going to catch a school bus there. You may have some children living in those ten apartments, so...
Yeah, you certainly might.
So, you might want to give some consideration to a landing area sometime. I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, so these are going to be rentals, so I'm assuming that the landlord is going to be responsible for landscaping and maintaining the landscape?
Yes, they are, and that is, has, from the start of this project, been the intention that they be rentals. We actually met with the water department superintendent yesterday to discuss that and the differences between condominiums and rentals, and who's responsible for, who will be responsible for water bills for instance. So, I think that we have no intention of ever selling these as condominium units.
And what about landscaping? Is it going to be, I mean, there's not a whole lot. Is there going to be grass, or wood chips?
Thank you for reminding me, because we did submit today a landscape plan that Tom Bunker's put together. We have a landscape plan. And I'll, I'll, again, go back and mention how attractive that Dunkin' Donuts is, and I think it will be maintained to the same quality.
Any plans for solar panels, or using a solar system and heat pumps for, for heating and cooling, or...
We don't have any, haven't included those details in the plans.
The only other comment I have is on the design of the, the house. I noticed on the front elevation, one of the entries doesn't have any, it's not covered by anything, even an overhang with a gutter or anything like that, and it's just exposed to the weather. I've, I've always tried to have at least one covered entry. I know that's a part of the situation I build with, we always have at least one covered entry.
You want to speak to it, or...
John Keenan, that's something that I've already sketched out as a change.
Mm-hmm.
Because I agree with you.
Yeah.
I think the main entrance is the other side.
Yeah.
And show us the other elevation.
Tell me where to stop.
That's ideal.
Here?
Yeah, that...
Uh, that, yeah, go up a little higher, yeah.
That's the primary entrance, that's facing the party.
Right.
Facing the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And I do agree, we want to bring those roofs a little bit out on the left, a little bit out on the left, on the right to cover those roofs.
Yeah.
Just an overhang.
Yeah, that's different, yeah.
To protect the door.
I mean, even, even if you ran it all the way across, just to divide up that...
The only deal was to make it look like Warner House.
Yeah, oh, I know, yeah.
Not that big.
Yeah, yeah. That's it from me.
Jim?
Yeah, so this is, I actually, when I first saw this, I said, wait a minute, is this a forty B? But isn't, this is a by right...
Well, it's not by right.
Special permit to the ZBA.
It's a special permit. It's not forty B in one of...
Using the existing zoning, though.
It is under the existing zoning.
I had mistaken that, but you still have to go to the ZBA for the special permit.
We do.
Because that's what you're getting.
Which is interesting, if it was a Mr. Cod project, as you know,
You're doing it here, okay.
For the, for a housing project alone, we would not need to.
Oh, because my first thought was, boy, this is one of the best-looking forty B jobs I've ever seen. It was a really good-looking building, and I was impressed about how the design was on it. But now I understand it is a market-rate housing.
Well...
It's whatever they want.
I think it's, it has to be stated that creating any housing is difficulty, difficult. And especially creating housing that's for rental and to be affordable. It, it's a challenge, and one of the reasons that we switched to duplexes was that the expense of accessibility requirements for larger buildings made the project essentially unaffordable. Given that this is a forty A project, there are no town subsidies as others are receiving for their affordable projects. And I just point that out, it is tough to create housing. It's taken us a long time to get to this point. It's part of why I think if we can avoid having to build sidewalks and do things like that, it makes it, you know, more feasible to, to do projects like this. I think that this kind of infill, if you will, on a business-owned property, getting ten apartments, you know, this is something I think we want to see as much as, as possible. And if it was right next door, we could have twenty units per acre by right, instead of six by special permit.
Well, I think it looks great.
I like the idea of duplexes.
That's it, Pat? Yeah, I've got a question, because you've got crawl space down here, but I don't see any access to the crawl space, nor do I see where on the plans you have heating capacity, where you're tucking that in. I, I don't understand that.
The floor plans will show, or do show, a hatch, a floor hatch in each unit, access to basement.
A floor hatch?
I want to show the floor.
Sure, let me pull this up for you, and you can find it.
It's only, because it only goes down three feet, right?
Sorry?
The basement, the, it's, the, the space between the basement floor and the first floor is, what, four feet, five feet?
Not even.
Not even, so it's just a little hatchway you can drop stuff down. Three steps and push it around, put it on rollers and slide it.
That's why I didn't know what kind of crawl space.
See, it's probably the two A, or the... It's almost recorded by code.
Oh.
Yeah, it's just that, right here.
Oh, okay, I see it under about...
Plumbing and...
Thirty-two by forty-four inch hatch.
Okay.
And most of it got, was where the attic.
Yeah.
Thank you, because I didn't know where. Didn't see that at all.
No, it's, uh... It works?
Yeah.
Play access, I mean, the only thing downstairs in the crawl space is a foam and pipe.
Oh, that's what I was, it looked like it was all the low-end foam insulation, and there wouldn't be very much space down there, so...
See, there's a two-hour rated wall in each of the units.
Yeah.
Double wall there, that goes right through the basement slot.
Okay.
The crawl space. Can't penetrate it, but those will be fully fricked with fire protection. That's where we can put them as close together as they are, with these old fire codes.
Do you have any, this is another question. Do you have any storage for the residents, or... I'm not asking that you should, I'm just asking the question, do you have?
Well, there's, there's a lot of generous closet space that varies in the size.
Okay.
You put basements, there'd be four.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, I was confused when I first started looking at this, because there's a lot of changes apparently occurring. For example, even on this notice for today, it says eleven two-bedroom apartments... For example, even on this notice for today, it says eleven two-bedroom apartments, three one-story structures. That's all changed.
Yeah, it's a significant change.
That was filed on November nineteenth, and these drawings are dated September ninth. So I was confused as to how many units and what is going on here, because the writer doesn't seem to match the drawings.
I hope that we've been transparent and made it clear what we're proposing. We're not proposing this plan, three buildings. We are proposing five duplexes, and that's what we want you to approve. We will be submitting these revised plans to the Board of Appeals well ahead of their January sixteen meeting, and our hope is that the planning board will be able to issue a site plan review approval before January sixteen. But this is what the proposal is. It is less lot coverage, it is a less number of apartments, so we've just reduced everything. We've increased the height because now these are small two-story buildings instead of one-story buildings. But from a planning point of view in terms of lot coverage, traffic and so on, this is not an increase from what we submitted a month ago, but it, of cour, it is very much a change.
So different dates, there should be different dates on these drawings then?
There's a revision date.
Well, there are revision dates on the, on the drawings.
Mom? I'm sorry, are you done?
Yeah, one quick question. None of these apartments are handicapped accessible, appear. Is that correct?
Can you say that again, please?
There are no handicapped accessible apartments.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Hi, Matt. I appreciate the reduction from eleven to ten. Nicely designed, like Mr. Fox pointed out. You said it's ten dedicated spots, parking spots, and the overflow will be part of the parking at Dunkin' Donuts?
Well, there are twenty spaces being provided because of the residences.
Okay.
There happen to be ten spaces right in front of the buildings, but right across from that, just as close to some of the units, is, are eight more spaces.
Okay. And snow removal, will that be by the landlord and is that figured out?
The town will not provide snow removal or trash removal for this project.
Okay.
So not only will the landlord be responsible for snow removal, which of course they take care of because of the restaurant, but you can see that there is a second dumpster proposed. We toyed a little bit with the idea of would we be able to service the residences using the same dumpster that's behind the Dunkin' Donuts, and the conclusion was there should be separate facilities.
Great. And last question, mail delivery, just small issue raised, that's number four, and have you figured out how you were going to number the buildings so there's no confusion with the mail delivery, one A, one B, two A, two B?
The plans that, the plan before you uses the same designation as requested by the engineering department, so we made the changes which they requested. So the Dunkin' Donuts building is called out on this plan, existing unit one, and this is building two, three, four, five, and six.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. First of all, I want to thank you. We're certainly hoping that more owners in town are going to take responsibility for workforce housing. The town has to really hope for that, so thank you very much. And on the design, it certainly is the New England vernacular, that looks really great. I agree with Jim, with Tom, and probably with the rest of the board that it's looking good, and I'm glad they're going to put little porches over those, those entryways, that would, that would have to happen. I'm also glad that you allowed them to go forward, even though they changed from eleven to ten, from three to five, that we could do this tonight and try to make your timeframe. Looking at the, at the plans, I too was, this is the first time I've actually looked at something labeled in this way, and I don't really understand it. If it says crawl space, I notice no storage, no garage, no cellar, where do you put your stuff? Does this mean that this is a slab on grade thing? When you go down, when you open that hatch, are you looking at dirt or are you looking at, what's down there?
Slab. It could be a slab on grade, but the reality of a slab on grade house is awful. It's hard.
Has to be up there.
It's quiet, hard to heat. They can run ductwork under control in the crawl space from the unit above, but there really isn't much under there. It's probably more efficient to do a crawl space because you still have to pour the walls four feet, five feet deep, and then you just have to fill the wall with slab. So it's, it's kind of easier to construct it physically.
But I'm not understanding what this way is.
Madam Chair, if, if I may, at the risk of repeating yourself to the microphone, for the folks at home, anyone who's watching after...
Mr. Keenan?
I'm sorry, the question again?
Um, just describe how you, okay, so you're digging a five-feet-deep trench and putting in a foundation?
The footing has to be at least four feet below grade for frost.
Is it a footing all the way around or...
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes. And then I think the crawl space has a limit of not more than thirty inches deep for access by anyone who goes there, but there won't be anything in the crawl space. It's just a nicer, it's a nicer building.
There's a concrete floor in the crawl space, right?
Sorry?
Crawl space has a concrete floor, dustcuff over the dirt?
Yes, it has a slab.
Yeah, you're concerned that it's dirt, no?
Yeah. It's not just dirt, it has a slab.
Yeah.
Oh, so it is a slab.
Housekeeping, and they insulated, the foundation walls are all insulated.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, I've been given a picture. I got the picture now. Okay, next question. If, if the utilities are actually in the attic, what's the access to that?
Access to the...
To if you need to fix whatever you're putting in there for heating, for...
There's hatches in the attic and there's hatches in the floor.
It requires access panel.
It's all...
But where are they?
It's all by code.
There are.
No, they're usually in the hallway or in one of the rooms.
You said they were going to be in the attic?
No, the hatch.
The hatch.
The access panel.
Oh. Is it one of those drop downs?
No.
Okay.
Not a drop down stair. It's only an access for a maintenance man.
Put a ladder up.
Someone to work on the equipment, it's not to get, store things up there.
Yeah.
No. None of that.
Thank you. I just couldn't understand it from what I was looking at.
Thank you.
I haven't seen that kind of thing here before.
It's kind of like floodplain. It's like building a floodplain have the, have the low area, just like that. And I've seen people do use it as storage, they put little rollers on the stuff and they slide them up and down.
The first house I owned was built in eighteen forty-seven, and it was built by digging a trench around the foundation and not digging out the inside. So it's, not that I haven't seen it, I haven't seen drawings that, of what that would be and what, what it would actually mean. And those were my questions. Then I too had questions about the sidewalk and the access because people undoubtedly are going to walk from there to McDonald's often.
Another point is we haven't done any things, I mean, we haven't done any test holes per se, so we don't know where the groundwater is, and we'd like, the crawl space takes care of that. The groundwater can be right close to it rather than a slab on top of fill that's close to the water table.
Okay, well, those, those were my questions, and I appreciate your project. So if we have no further questions...
Public comment.
Public comment. Are people here who want to comment on the project or ask questions of their own?
Just maybe a couple, thank you.
Please come forward.
Hi, John. Hi, Lori Lopes. Thank you. I am in lot six A, and I'm a little lost now because the plan that I saw was nothing like this. So I guess a few of my questions would be, what do you plan on doing for the abidahs on Trotting Park Road? What is, like, along here? I'm, basically, that's my gold pen right here, and I believe what's the space between that area, what's going to be along there? Is it going to be fencing, trees? What do you propose to do along that side? Just so, you know, people are not cutting through to go to the bike park.
Could you, could you address your questions?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, there we go.
So that people are not cutting through, you know, my properties. They did, we brought that concern up when they did the Dunkin' Donuts, so they got a fence and they got some trees. And also, the wildlife corridor that's here, that honestly runs that whole length of all along Trotting Park Road as far as we can see. I've been living on six A for most of my sixty-one years, and I'm just a little concerned about that. Um, yeah, I just don't, what, what's going to be along there?
Mr. Amet?
Well, the fencing that exists now, which is in good condition, was installed as a requirement of the approval of the Dunkin' Donuts because of concerns by the neighbors that there be control of trash and also people who might as, just had, cut through people's properties. So the fencing will be relocated as necessary and maintained. And the landscaping plan, I'll pull that up again. The landscaping that isn't within the limit of work will stay. We could add more landscaping if that seems necessary. One of the interesting things about it is there will be a retaining wall along here, so, so these buildings are actually are a bit lower than the topography to the, to the west. But I, my assumption has been that Dunkin' Donuts has been a very good neighbor, done what they said they were going to do, and they're going to be the people running the show in the future too. Hopefully.
So what type of, I mean, how far, how far will the fence go and what type of fence?
Well, I assume it'll be the same fencing, maybe they'll even reuse it.
Like a black metal taming fence now? Is that what's there?
No, it's, it's, it's a stainless, I mean, not stainless, but it's a, it's not dark.
What do you say?
We're going to try to avoid having, miss, please, don't have conversations there, you have to use the microphone.
Yeah, so how, how far will that fence go?
It can go along the entire property as long as it's needed. I think it, Tom, do you show that on the plan?
Isn't this the fencing?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's... That, I can say, that fence I have on there is a, I put that on as a temporary work fence.
Mm-hmm.
For usually security during, during work, but as a few...
So, okay.
Shows on the retaining wall. So the, the ground level at that u, building six is being excavated down to about elevation fifty-seven, and the top behind slope's house is, the ground is up at sixty-four. So it's a seven-foot reduction. We have a, basically, a four-foot-high retaining wall and then some slope above that, and I do show a fence, I show a fence at the top of the retaining wall, but the fence could be moved back closer to the property line either way. And as Bob said, it could run further along there, but I think, certainly the combination of that retaining wall and fence, nobody will be going up and down there too early in...
On two, six, or seven?
First.
Well, six, two and, two A and six.
If you're both six A, yeah, but up at the corner, the topography goes down, but there could, a fence could remain along there also, as Bob said.
And how about lighting's flashing in the, into, from the back of the buildings towards trot, towards this property? What will the lighting be like there?
That would be in the architecture. We have...
Could you please, could you please, each of you, use the microphone?
Yes. We do have, you know, parking lot lights in front of the buildings, but we have no sight lighting behind the buildings.
The light, the lights would be building mounted at each door, shielded, low levels of shining out. They do show on our plans where there's wall-mounted lights. That would be it. The other thing we did mention is that the setbacks along the north side is ten feet, the setback off Sandwich Road is thirty-five, and we have a twenty-five-foot setback behind the residential zone.
I think Mr. Amet mentioned that in his presentation.
Yeah, and actually, this building, building five over here is sixty-two feet away from the property line. This building a corner is twenty-seven feet from the property line.
Jim?
Can we, can you possibly specify dark sky lighting all around the whole site so you're not lighting up, everything's lighting down and keeping everything on, on, on the property? Because that's usually what we do.
Yeah.
And that solves this issue that's being brought up.
This highlights along the parking area for safety.
Right, but everything else is just down only. No floodlights going out?
No. The other thing is, do you have a site plan of the existing? So there are a lot of trees on the site. We haven't had time to figure out exactly which ones we could keep, which ones we could save.
Good luck.
Well, they're, they're sort of integrated.
All those X's are existing trees. Some of them are eighteen-inch, twenty-inch oaks. You'll see along the drive in, there's a very nice four matching trees on the north side of the entrance. So if we, we haven't had time to superpose the buildings with the trees on there, see what we could save.
With excavation equipment, it's really hard to save any of those trees, you're going to be driving tractors over their roots. I, we've tried to do it before, it's...
Well, we'll try, especially if you look along that, it's a limit of work.
Yeah.
As, we'll, we'll do our best, you know, try to save it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment or question?
I'm Mary Bishop. I live on Trotting Park Road, and my son Michael has the house right next to Laurie, which I own, and I'm next to Laurie, and next to me is my daughter Nancy. We have a kind of a relative compound there, and it's been that way for, for years. And if any of you, Trotting Park Road looks very congested, but if you went to the back of our houses, it was all farmland, and we've kind of kept it that way. And we all have gardens. My daughter Nancy has a mini farm there. And we have deer, and we have, of course, coyotes that pass through there. There is a wildlife corridor, and we have a swamp right across the road. But the, I'm concerned with that, but also, but I'm concerned with the traffic. The traffic, they say, there was like two hundred and seventy that went in the peak hours. Well, I've been to Dunkin' Donuts, and those cars try to get in there, and they're still on the road at the pink out, pink hours in the morning, you know, eight, nine, even before that. I don't know how those rental, you know, the people living there are going to compete with that traffic that comes in there. And then that traffic comes up Trot, Sandwich Road, a lot of those people don't stop at the stop sign. So we on Trotting Park Road, there used to be one or two or three cars. Now we're backed up because that's a cut-through. So we have Route twenty-eight, then we have Sandwich Road, and I'd like to know how many accidents and, that have really been down there, and we have had them too. And I'd like to see if there was a traffic study committee, because with three hundred units probably going in on Sandwich Road, you're going to have about six hundred more cars coming down our way. So I'd just like for you to keep that in mind. And when you talk about, yes, we need rental property, but I've, I've had people that said that they can't even afford the rental property that these landlords are charging. They, they make fifteen to twenty, maybe twenty-five dollars an hour. They, they make 15 to 20, maybe $25 an hour. Their, all, their paycheck goes to this affordable housing so far. So, you know, I, look at it a little closer and see if that's really, you know, worth it in that little space there. Because, you know, we're getting squeezed out down there in T-Ticket. I mean, we are bumper to bumper, no matter what time of the day, to get on. I, I go from Trotting Park Road, four stops to get to the lights on Jones Road. That's how bad it's gotten. So, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. You must, you must be among the ones running the little vegetable stand there.
That, that is a neighbor's, that's not ours. We don't have a vegetable stand. But, but there is a neighbor that has a, several acres on that corner at the end of Trotting Park. And then, there's another development going up on Trotting Park, you know, halfway down. So, you can see it's getting very crowded down there, and it's, it's just not a good thing right now.
It is getting crowded, you're right about that. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
My name's Danny Figurito, and I live at Lot 8. Obviously, all this has changed. First time seeing this, obviously, as you guys. So, kind of, things have changed a little bit, but the main idea hasn't. My biggest issue was, one, traffic. There's days and days I stay there, waiting to pull in and out my driveway because I can't go because people are waiting to go into Dunkin' Donuts consistently. It's ridiculous. The other issue would be safety. Originally, I believed that there were seven, eight lots or drive, parking spaces proposed for the units over on the other side of the drive-thru. So, my consideration was. Safety as people walking through the drive-thru to get to their units. And then, obviously, if kids are involved with people that are renting these places, that's another issue. The consistent traffic of people going in and out of Dunkin' Donuts, they don't, they don't slow down. They drive right through and, and there're maniacs in there. It's ridiculous. Um, the, that's the biggest issue. I mean, right now, it's all trees and woods and areas, so that's all gonna be cut down. So, now, you're opening up that whole area for, all I see is people in their backyards. Fine, I have neighbors on the other side, that doesn't bother me. It's, then, what are we gonna do here? I mean, there's an existing fence on the prop, on Dunkin' Donuts property, chain like that, a third of the way down. They, are we gonna do anything going all the way down to the lot line that butts Trot Park? Those are my biggest issues.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak and bring forward a concern? Mr. Ahmadi?
Well, I'll just point out a couple of things. The lot coverage that's proposed is 12.51% by structures. 12.51%. What the zoning bylaw allows is 40%. The total lot coverage is of 46.7%. Uh, zoning bylaw allows 70%. None of the property is within the wildlife corridor district, which is shown on the plan along here, but it doesn't extend. Now, that doesn't mean that the deer know where that line is. And, of course, we're gonna lose some trees. And it has an impact on wildlife and on neighbors. But we need, we need this kind of housing. And it's the right zone for it. It's actually a very good location for it. It's near potential or existing public transportation. Easy to get to jobs and so on. It's possible, if not likely, that, that some or a couple of the residents may actually work on this site. So, this is a good project, and I think we can try to address lighting issues. We can take a look at the landscaping issues to try to minimize adverse impacts and to create more buffer. So, I will come back with some consideration of, of these issues. Thank you.
That would be good, but I'd just like to reiterate that it is a good and welcome project. It's true, downtown is getting more crowded. There's almost no help for that. But this project is well within the existing zoning. You know, it just, it is. And it's a lower lot coverage than might have been expected. So, you know, you have to count your blessings where they exist. John?
When they come back, I'd like to, to address Danny's concern there. Longer popular line, you're gonna put a fence there? You're gonna put screening there? That's why I was asking originally about lighting, and you've addressed the lighting, it's gonna be dark sky, but.
Well, it'd be great, and if I could suggest that, those of you who have talked about these issues, if you want to contact me or just send a note, something about your ideas of what you think you'd like along that line in terms of fencing or other things, then that just would help us to, to figure out what, what works best.
Well, and the revised drawings and complete drawings will be available in the planning department by about when?
As soon as we get full-size drawings, we'll have them available. Right now, we only have 11-by-17s.
Yeah, we will, we will, again.
They'll be online. It's much easier to see them in real life in your office. And there, you can ask questions. And that would probably be by the first of the year?
I would think sooner than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I again want to express considerable appreciation for the staff for the understanding our, our desire to make a better plan that we can actually go forward with. So, we'll try to get in that complete set of drawings with some improvements as soon as we can.
Excellent, thank you. So, continue then to the 14th?
If that works for the applicant.
What date are we talking about again?
14th is our next meeting.
January, January 14th.
14th of January. Right?
Yeah.
Sure, of course, we'll get in the plans well before then. The hope would be that if we get the plans in ahead of time, we've addressed some of these issues. I don't think we need, need to go over them a lot with you. My hope is that the staff could have a motion that you can vote on and, so that the Board of Appeals would have it when they meet.
We always prepare those ahead of time. So, we'll have something ready for you if you're comfortable. If, if I may, now.
What's the sense of the board there? We're comfortable with that? Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to, we're talking about pretty minor changes. We're talking about some fencing.
Yeah.
And some lighting.
That's all.
That'll be added, and.
And landscaping.
And landscaping.
Yeah.
Right, and actually, just a little more time to absorb the drawings. But this, it's, all will be done by then.
Yeah, so, if I may, just a couple of things. So, for any of the folks in the audience who got a public hearing notice, there was a link on that document. You can use that link to access the new set of plans online. So, those are already posted. Additionally, I do think it's worth noting, the building commit, the building department's referral indicated a potential issue, and it's come up here in conversation with the ability of the residential units, their parking location, with respect to where the vehicles are coming in for the drive-thru. So, there may be, and if the applicant can provide that, some sort of demonstration of what that typical morning queue looks like, so that perhaps there could be some pavement markings put in to demonstrate for the vehicles coming into the Dunkin' Donuts line that, you know, you need to move over to the lefts to allow for people to come in and out of their parking spot.
She wanted them to use the middle aisle for access to the drive-thru.
Yeah, there could be some signage or something.
Some, some sort of demonstration of what that typical morning looks like. Because, as you know, people are trying to go to work. They need to be able to get out of their houses. And if Dunkin' Donuts is as crazy as we all know it is, we have to be able to live together. So, if there could be some sort of demonstration.
Probably some, some striping on the road or something to indicate it. Is there any possibility of a wider curb cut so there's more room?
Likely not. I think engineering, well, actually, your zoning bylaw dictates no more than 24 feet.
Right.
Width, but internal circulation could be looked at. So, for example, I think the very northern part of that area might be a two-way circulation. Maybe you want to consider a one-way. Just ideas that are being thrown out to help with.
That's not gonna work.
The idea of people sharing spaces, right? Because the whole idea here, if I'm understanding this correctly, is that the residential units need to share the spaces with the Dunkin' Donuts lot.
Right.
And so, therefore, you're gonna have people walking all over the place.
So, the, the building commissioner recommended that people come into the parking lot, take a left into the Dunkin' Donuts portion to access the drive-thru rather than going past the residential units.
Yeah.
And how would you indicate that with the way you put the white lines on the?
You'd have to do signage, like, put a sign, drive-thru, and put a drive-thru arrow to go through that section.
That would probably be a good luck thing.
Right. No, understood, but that was just both of his referral.
Yeah, I just want to remind people that we are doing site plan, which includes that.
Yes.
It includes landscaping, lighting, and the design aspects of the buildings. Because this is still going to the ZBA after this. So, there will be other hearings on this property. So, keep your antenna up for that.
Paul, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to see some detail on the wastewater system that's being used going into the existing system or something at the meeting next time. Mm-hmm. I don't see anything on the drawings here.
Any other comments before we move on? Mr. Ahmadi?
I just want to say that, you know, we have located the parking for the residents with 10 spaces in front of those units. With the sidewalk right there, the residents aren't going to have to cross the driveway to get to their car. If the traffic backs up for the Dunkin' Donuts queuing, that surely is a conflict. But I think it's one that people will work out. Remember, the number of trips per peak hour is about five, one every 12 minutes on average, by the residents leaving there. So, half the residents leave in one hour and a half in another, on the average. And, and just like the traffic on 28 in T-Ticket, it works be, to the extent it works, because people stop and they let people in. I think that somebody, every 12 minutes, trying to get out of a parking space and just simply back between cars to go out, because that's too weird, that location. That is gonna be the way it needs to work.
You are aware of the issue?
We understand the issue, but if we're going to create housing next to businesses, and we are proposing that in a lot of places in town or hopefully more, these kind of conflicts are gonna exist, and I think that they, they can, can be worked through. But I don't think the solution in this particular case is going to have the traffic to get to the drive-thru, come in, take a left, take a right, take another left, and completely changing the traffic pattern. And right now, we have a one-way traffic flow that goes through, we can do better than that, goes through the drive-thru and exits this way. And to make this a typical two-way right-in here way and expect the traffic to come like this and go like, I don't think that's the solution. I just don't.
And yet, you can see where people who are, who are renting there, they're parking head-in toward their units. They're going to back into the area that's the shared area.
I think people will see what's going on and, and let, let people get out. I think that will happen. Or maybe people will learn that they do better if they back into their parking space when they come home at the end of the day at a time when there's no queue.
There's a similar situation in front of Cappy's, if you picture that, where there are two head-in parking things and people, you know, the potential for rear-ending one another is enormous there. And it is in several places in town when you stop and think about it. And yet, you don't hear about rear-end accidents there. So, people do learn to maneuver it, but you can still see it's an issue. It looks to me as if, on that plan, there's been an effort to save the green space between the two parking areas that exist now. It happens that when the town put together a group to study widening or doing something or other about Route 28 going up to Oxtail. So, we're going to, we all had to walk along that road and consider where to have the new size sidewalks and so forth. And Dunkin' Donuts was used as the staging area. So, we all went to that Dunkin' Donuts and had a good chance to see exactly what that building is like and what the landscape is like, and it is a nice landscape. It is, nice trees, nice space. But if you had to, you could reduce the size of that intermediate lot, the one in the middle, if you really needed to.
We considered the possibility of having parking spaces in this area. It's wide enough. This is a particularly deep area between, behind these spaces. You could have a row of parking along here. And we don't need it. And it would change adversely the very attractive and pleasant area in front of that building.
Yeah, it is. It is, it'd be a shame to lose it.
Obviously, the, we have a common owner, and it will be a common owner, of the business and the residences. They obviously will have an interest in satisfying both their customers and their tenants. And I think this is a good plan the way it is, and they'll work it out, and it will work. I'm not sure how long the period of the morning is. And this is an example, never ask a question you don't know the answer to. I don't know how long the queue in the morning lasts, whether it's, you know, about an hour long or it's longer that, that we, that it's. We have a potential problem. But I think people will learn to deal with it and figure it out.
I think between now and when you come back on the 14th of January, many of us will notice more about that queue because I suppose we all drive by there at times. So, thank you, and we'll see you on the 14th.
I just have a quick question. Do you think this is the longest queue you have at any of the Dunkin' Donuts in town? I mean, this, he owns all of them, right?
Well, Mr. Eschander can probably answer that. I was thinking about the queue, I didn't take a good look at it, that goes to the one on Main Street across from the church. And thinking about the fact that that queue goes, if I have this correct, past the, a drugstore, and residences are in the back. And my guess is it's much more convoluted than, than what we're proposing here. I just think this is, this is as good as it gets. I think so. Maybe it could be better, but.
Just one last thing. I'm sorry.
No, don't speak till you get to the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. These, have you done traffic studies? And when, when are they done? Like, are they done in January and February? Because we all know that traffic quadruples in the summertime, especially in T-Ticket. Like Aunt Mary said, it takes you four stops to get to the light from Trotting Park Road to the stop and shop light. You can stop four times and wait. And that's constant, constant, constant in the summer. I've lived there forever, and it, and it's terrible. And it's not easy to get out, and people do not let you out. You literally have to cut out. And I'm going to get the police report, how many people do not stop at that stop sign because there's many. They sit at Midas, and they stop five, six, seven, seven cars that do not stop at the stop sign at Sandwich Road. So, there's, there'll be a huge amount that we'll see on that report, so, but thank you.
I have to comment. The Dunkin' Donuts was approved in 2016, and it's there. The Dunkin' Donuts was approved in 2016, and it's there. The traffic is there. We're talking about creating some much-needed apartment housing that is going to create a handful of trips per hour. It is not going to measurably change the situation, the problems that people are already experiences, experiencing. And this is a business zone, it actually happens to be immediately adjacent to the By Right 20 units, Mr. Cod district. And a traffic study studying Dunkin' Donuts, it's nine years too late, except we did have a traffic study, and the planning board did have it, and the Board of Appeals did have the traffic study, and the project was approved.
I think we understand that it's the addition of the parking associated with the housing, not with Dunkin' Donuts. And I think we're ready to move on.
Thank you.
One minute coming before we move on. One quick comment.
All right.
When I was on the Transportation Committee, there was the discussion about improvements to that intersection. And there was funding coming from the state, and there was consideration of putting a rotary in, or doing a light, or doing some improvements there. So the DPW is well aware of the issues on that intersection. And I don't know what the status today, but it might be something we might want to follow-up on. But there has been discussion on getting funding to do that.
I'm sure there will be. Now we're moving on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good project. Okay, we have an interesting new topic for our discussion. I think we'll, we're moving on now to the discussion items.
Excuse me. You and Bob sound great.
Yeah, you want to take that outside?
Allergies are coming.
You ready?
I have developed allergies. I've never had it before, I got them now.
Jim, okay. We've got a new item that's not described here, but it's well within what we do for discussion. Paul, we're having a special anniversary, tell us about it.
Well, you're skipping over the appointment?
What appointment?
The first item under discussion.
No, I was just going to put your thing first.
Okay, that's fine. I did some research on the history of the planning board. I caught some idea that it was a hundredth anniversary. I did some research on it, and I looked at the annual reports from '23, '24, '25, '06, and '07. And I put together these notable events here for us to consider. And basically, the Article 17 in Special Town Meeting in 1923, they agreed to appoint a committee. And then the following year, they named 12 people to be on that committee. And then there was a series of events occurring and how active the, that committee was, including preserving the characteristics of the town, and it was the zoning bylaw, and the first town on Cape Cod to have a zoning bylaw. So then they recommend a business district. So there's a lot of things going on in the first couple of years, and I'm suggesting that the planning board vote to acknowledge a hundredth anniversary of the board in 2024, and prepare a letter to the select board for that purpose. And usually, they ask for proclamation, and we can prepare a proclamation. In fact, it's based on this information here. So I'd like to have a discussion on other members to see if you want to pursue this any further.
Okay, so the planning board itself is having a birthday. It's our hundredth birthday party. And it's interesting, the status that we have as here in the state and on Cape Cod. We were the fourth, we don't know who the first three were, the fourth town to create a planning board under the new law the state had created.
In the state.
In '23, in the state, we were the fourth. But on the Cape, we were the first. So our hundredth birthday, it's an important time. And how many of you would like to go forward with the idea that we make something of it? Paul is prepared to help us. Any comments?
Having a party, I'm all in favor of it.
You like that, okay. Yes, down this end?
I'd love to. I think the planning board is a very important board in this town, and I think it is something that should be recognized, that we've been around for this long.
I think it'd be great. Right. So thank you, Paul, very much for finding this out about us.
Want to take a vote to move forward?
Um.
Do we have to?
I'd like to take a vote when we have it to adopt the proclamation.
Yeah.
Do we all have a copy of it?
No, it's basically what's in this thing here. But I can get your proclamation. I drafted, and obviously, the select board will prepare their own proclamation. I've done one or two of them in the past, and they've kept, I wrote verbatim, so I don't think they'll change this any very much.
Yeah, I think they're not going to. So what I'd like to do is have the board have time to absorb all that and read the proclamation before we actually have to vote on it, and do that at our meeting on the fourteenth, if that's okay, in January.
Yep.
I could read it now if you want it.
No, wait till we vote on it.
Yeah, let's read it as, as we're going to vote on it. And then we could move it up on the agenda, so it's not on empty house.
So it's the hundred and first anniversary.
It would be, wouldn't it? Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, you're right up against the deadline.
I think Pat's been on it for a quarter of that.
Thank you, Paul, very much. Okay, now, our next order of business is, we need a representative on the Community Preservation and Commission Committee. And Tom has volunteered to do that, if you're interested in having him do it.
I thought we voted that already.
No, we did not.
We're the Affordable Housing Committee.
So I would like to nominate him to be our representative on the Community Preservation Committee and have a second for that.
I'll second that.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're it.
Thank you.
It's more meetings. Thank you very much.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Great. Planning Department report.
Trying to keep it brief. We've got a number of things that we're trying to finalize, one of which is the Open Space and Rec Plan. We've talked about it before with this group. So we're going through the final steps now, and we hope to be able to submit to the state by the end of the month. Very important document. So we're excited to be able to get that done and submit it to the state. We're also working with the Cape Cod Commission on our wayfinding plan. So as you know, we just finished up our parking management plan. Part two of that effort was signage, connecting people from the bike paths to downtown, in downtown from the parking areas to the shops, et cetera. Cape Cod Commission's produced like a draft report for us to consider, and we'll be looking to do some public meetings at the end of early spring when people start returning back to town. Importantly, Paul has been very excited about this, this moment, but we, town meeting approved the last bit of funding for the Shiverx Pond viewing and fishing platform. So we are working closely with engineering to get that design plan out to bid and hopefully begin construction potentially by the spring. So we're very excited about that. By the spring.
By when?
By the spring.
Well, the target is the Arbor Day, and that's April.
Right, right.
How many years has it been, Paul?
Long time.
Long time.
Long, long time. So that's, that's good news.
Very excited about that.
Not as long as the Falmouth Station, but almost.
Yeah, well, you know, the mills.
Falmouth Station was 10 years, it was probably eight.
And the last item that we're excited to share with you is the fact that we are applying for grant funds from the Cape Cod Commission again to produce design guidelines specifically for the mixed residential and commercial overlay district. I've reached out to several firms who prepare these design guidelines. It can be a costly effort, so we've trimmed it down to just the district because we know, you know, obviously, town meeting approved all the amendments to Mr. Cod, and so we want to be prepared for future applicants. And that effort, putting together these guidelines, will really help with that, you know, shaping exactly what you want to see within that district. So we're hopeful to get that grant funding. If we don't receive it from the Cape Cod Commission, we're going to go through the state later on in, well, it would be early 2025.
What I ask in connection with that, Pat and I, some time ago, some years ago, worked on a design guideline based on the Cape Cod Commission's work already, based on that, so it wasn't starting de novo, on guidelines for the whole town, not just for one area of it. And when will that be printed? Because it wouldn't have changed between then and now.
Well, part of that effort is to take that document that you were working on, and sort of our Plan B, if you will, or B or C, is to hire the Cape Cod Commission to essentially create a new set of guidelines based on what you, the work that you had done for us for Falmouth, but perhaps just the district, if not the entire town. So we're working multiple angles, but part of the design guideline effort is public involvement. So you would definitely want to have a couple of public meetings so that people, not only within the district, but also within town, can come and tell you, you know, their desires about architecture and front steps and all sorts of elements that go into design. So we couldn't necessarily, we will definitely use the effort that you had started, but we'll build upon that with that outside help, either the Cape Cod Commission or a private consultant.
Is Union Studios one of the firms?
They are, yes.
Good. Yeah.
Yep, very excited.
Okay, so that, that's all very good news.
We've spent a lot of time with them already.
Yeah.
And I like their stuff.
They do a great job.
Yeah. Okay, and then I wanted to speak for a minute about the issue of the short-term rental. You know, the Mara had prepared, we had our panels, we had a hearing, we met four times. Town meeting turned it down, and they might have done us a favor, because the State Supreme Court, so that the Massachusetts Supreme Court, has already found, at least in one instance, that very closely parallels our own setup here, what we have for zoning, that short-term rentals that are not owner-occupied are commercial use and therefore illegal in a residential zone.
So that's been a finding already by?
That's been a finding already by two things. Land court, depends on how they're set up. If it's a motel or a hotel.
So a summer home, if you have a house and you rent it weekly.
If you live there, fine, go right ahead.
Short-term rentals without owner occupancy?
So it has to be?
And I'm going to tell you the name of the case, and you can read it.
Oh, no, I'm agreeing with, I understand, I heard it, but I just think this is a really big change. Our town has, we, has lived on summer rentals forever, that's.
My stepson just bought a house just to do that.
And so now that's illegal?
According to the State Supreme Court.
What's the, do you have that case?
What's the case law?
It's called Lynnfield.
Enfield?
Lynnfield, L-Y-N.
Oh, Lynnfield?
Lynnfield. And I can send you a link, the link that worked for me.
Okay.
Or I'll send it to Jed and Melinda, and they can send it around.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so you can read it and see. But going along with that, because this, of course, has been much discussed with Jed and with Mara and so forth, all of this about an uproar over short-term rentals is relatively new. So there'll be more cases bought, there'll be deeper case law later. We're sort of at the beginning of this, because the situation, Falmouth as a resort community is not unique. There are other towns in the same situation. So this isn't the end of it, but it is where it is right now. That's where it is right now. So it could be with town meeting turning us down, in effect, if what we had proposed went forward, we would have been making it legal to have short-term rentals all over town. We would have been changing that, and we might not want to do that if we don't know what we're doing. It's the not knowing what we're doing is the tricky element.
Can, do you define for me short-term rentals specifically?
The state has defined it for you.
What is it?
And the state says it's 30 days or less. They already did that.
So no weekly rentals?
Weekly can be up to 30 days.
It's 30 days.
I'm misunderstanding.
It doesn't outlaw weekly. It says short-term rentals are rentals of less than, are 30 days or less. A week fits within that.
Yep.
Seven times.
Are we saying those are illegal then?
No, they're legal.
I'm confused.
It's a complicated topic, and I think what, what the chair's trying to say is that, you know, town meeting put it in indefinite postponement, we come back to the drawing board with the working group, and we start talking about why, and we start talking about options moving forward. But we won't be doing that until January with respect to the holidays. But I think what you're trying to get at is that we, we need to do some more work in town meeting.
It's unfinished work, and we need to work on it. But we need to work on it in light of all that we know about the law.
Yep.
And not just reading once or twice, really knowing it, and being answered, able to answer your questions and the rest of the questions.
Well, it's a pretty big impact to summer neighborhoods. I mean, I grew up, everybody rented their house out for, you know, four or five weeks. The cutoff used to be, I did it too, and the cutoff was my insurance company said you can't do more than 10, and that's where, where they would, they would stop me from doing more than 10. But now you can't even do one week?
Yeah, you can. Jim, how many weeks fit into 30 days?
So you're saying 30 days is a short-term rental?
Yeah.
And I thought, I thought you were saying they're illegal.
So that would be at least four weeks.
There's more work to be done. I wouldn't go too far down the rabbit hole. It's not on the agenda.
Seven days a week, seven and thirty.
Not on the agenda.
Okay, so, committee reports. Are there any committee reports, Paul?
Not today.
Not today? Any others? No? Or the Cape Cod Commission?
They're having a public meeting tomorrow. I believe, is it five o'clock, Jed? At the public, at the library?
I think it is, yes.
Regarding the internet.
Yes.
They want to get people's input on their feelings of what's available and what could be available.
For what?
What, for the internet, what's available and, or what could be available.
The broadband, right.
Right.
At the library, five o'clock.
Tomorrow.
Any announcements?
Well, wait a minute. I think that because this is our last meeting before the holidays, we should wish each other and our viewing audience happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
And thank you.
I like it starts on Christmas Day.
Yeah, that's interesting. This is late, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. There isn't any general correspondence?
No. I make a motion adjourn.
The next meeting is going to be January 14th, and we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.